Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council for Palm Beach Gardens for September 19th, 2024. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. If we could please call roll.
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to our agenda this evening, ma'am?
Madam Mayor, I have a request.
Yes, sir.
As you know, all of you know, during the meeting, I mean during the month of September, we're required to have two meetings to approve our budget as per state law, to approve the budget for fiscal year 2425. It has to be approved by October 1st. Therefore, I would like to offer some amendments to the agenda so that we be sure we accomplish those pieces of business up front.
Okay, sir.
What I'd like to do is, with your permission, is to move Resolution 45, the tax levy and the Ordinance 10 to be the first order of business as far as our budget is concerned. I would also like to recommend that we move Resolution 57 to be the order of business right after that, which is the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement with Local 5470. Then, by all means, go to consent. I have no city manager's report. Then you could take comments from the public and continue with the agenda after that. That's my request.
I'd like to make a motion to reorder the agenda as stated.
Second.
All right. Thank you. I guess we need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So that means that we are going to go right into number eight on our agenda, which is the public hearing for Resolution 45 2024, adopting our budget. If the clerk could please read the title.
Resolution 45 2024, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a tax levy and millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, directing the city clerk to forward a certified copy of the resolution to the Palm Beach County property appraiser and tax collector within three days after its adoption, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. We have Ariane Panzak from our Budget Department here. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Good evening. Very well, thank you.
Great.
So, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. For the record, Ariane Panzak, Finance Administrator. Tonight is our second and final budget hearing for fiscal year 25. Before you tonight will be Resolution 45, setting the millage rate at 5.0537 mils, and also Ordinance 10, adopting our budget for fiscal year 25. There's been no changes since our last budget hearing, and if council would like, we can move straight into the required actions for tonight.
Excellent. Yes, please. Thank you.
Perfect. So, the first order of business is to publicly announce the proposed rate and the increase over the rollback rate. So, staff recommends a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a final operating and total millage rate of 5.0537 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 4.7798 by 5.73%.
All right. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second. We don't have any comment cards, I should mention. So, let's go ahead and close the hearing. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt the final operating and total millage rate of 5.037 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 4.7798 by 5.73%.
I'll second. Thank you both. Any discussion?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. You read 5.0357. It's 5.0537.
Let's do it again.
Yeah, please.
Yep. For the record. Thank you, ma'am.
So, I want to make a motion that the City of Palm Beach Gardens adopt a final operating and total millage rate of 5.0537 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 4.7798 by 5.73%.
I'll second that one. Excellent. And thank you, Patty, for catching that. We appreciate it. So, we don't seem to have any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that Resolution 45 2024 passes without...
No, that was just the motion on the millage rate.
Right. I apologize.
Sorry. Then we have to read the title of Resolution 45.
Thank you, Max.
Oh, we have to do one more motion.
One more motion.
Setting the...
Thank you.
So, the first motion was for the rollback rate, and the second motion is setting the millage rate.
Let's go for it. Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to approve Resolution 45 2024, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 45 2024, setting the final millage rate for the fiscal year 2024 and 2025 at 5.0537 mils.
I'll make a... I'll second that one. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
And then one more.
All right. Thank you. So...
One more.
Patty, you have to read the title?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 10 2024, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for fiscal year commencing October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Has anything changed since first reading? You said not at all. So, we'll go ahead and move on. We don't need another presentation. So, let's go ahead and close the hearing. And I'm asking for a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 10 on second reading, adopted the budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Madam Mayor, I'll move Ordinance 10 2024 for second reading and adoption.
I'll second. Thank you both so much. And no further discussion from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And thank you all so much. The budget is one of the most important things that we spend our year doing. And you can see, I think we all take everything we do here seriously, but I think that's part of why you see us hiccuping a little bit. We want to make sure we get it perfect. So, thank you so much. Let's move along. And just bear with me while I make sure that we are where we need to be on the list of things. We're going to move right along to...
Resolution 57.
Resolution 57. Thank you, guys. Resolution 57. So...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Cheryl Stewart.
I apologize. I was just getting the page. I'm just a little flipped around. We do have to have the clerk read the title real quick.
Resolution 57 2024, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Palm Beach Gardens and the professional firefighters and paramedics at Palm Beach Gardens, Local 5470, IAAF, for the fiscal years 2024 to 2025, 2025 to 2026, and 2026 to 2027, authorizing the appropriate personnel to execute said agreement, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. And here we have Cheryl Stewart, our Human Resources Administrator, at the podium.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, Cheryl Stewart, Human Resources Administrator. I'm pleased to be before you this evening to bring forward for ratification for council to consider a new three-year agreement with the new local fire union, 5470. You've all received the staff report, which highlights the major changes in the contract. That would be effective starting October 1 through September of 2027. We had four collective bargaining sessions, worked really hard together, both teams, primarily focusing on work hours and salaries. Just to highlight a few, the new work schedule, and starting in year three of the contract, would transition to 2472, working 24 hours on and then 72 hours off. In addition, as a result of the salary adjustments, the total increase would be 24% a total over three years for the sworn personnel, and 18% for the community risk reduction over a three-year period, bringing our salaries and our work schedule in line with the growing trend of having 2472 work schedule and salaries to be within the top three comparable departments, particularly those that have that same work schedule. And with that, we're very confident that this would be, make us extremely competitive for purposes of recruitment and retention of the most qualified personnel that we have. Questions?
Not quite yet. So, let's go ahead and close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve Resolution 57 2024?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to move Resolution 57 2024.
I'll second. Thank you so much. All right. Let's bring it back for... I have to apologize again. I'm sorry. I guess I got a little bit put aside. I do have a comment card, so I do need to go ahead and pause for a moment to allow for that. Is that okay, if I go back and do that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. If I could please call Dave Tirana to the podium. If you could come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name's Dave Tirana. My address is 400 Quadrant Road, North Palm Beach, Flori...
You don't need to...
Okay.
Did you want to share anything about why you're not sharing your address this evening?
Oh, yeah, that's probably a bad idea, huh? Gosh. All right. All right. I'd like to say a few things if that's possible.
Yes, sir.
As you all know, my name's Dave Tirana. I've been a firefighter, paramedic with the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the past 21 years. I'm also the president of the Professional Firefighters and Paramedics of Palm Beach Gardens, Local IAAF, Local 5470. As most of you know, we took a huge leap of faith when we started our own union in January of this year. With this step came a lot of uncertainty and unknowns, yet we knew the ultimate goal was to strengthen our labor-management relationship and have more control of our own destiny. I stand before you tonight to express my sincere gratitude for the most recent collective bargaining agreement. It was accomplished in just four meetings, which I believe is a record. It has quickly become the best and most attractive CBA for fire departments in all of Palm Beach County. We have a city and fire administration that truly cares about the health, safety, and wellness of their firefighters. I'd like to personally thank City Manager Ferris, Deputy City Manager Love Verrier... Laurie. Sorry, Laurie. You can... HR Administrator Stewart, Fire Chief Keith Breyer, Deputy Fire Chief James Appolito, Division Chief Sean Brodel, Mayor Reed, Vice Mayor Middleton, Councilwoman Primoroso, Councilwoman Tinsley, Councilman Woods.
All my firefighters stand.
Thank you for taking such good care of us, for providing us with the best benefits, the nicest trucks, state-of-the-art equipment and training tower. On behalf of myself and all your firefighters, we'll continue to provide industry-leading fire and EMS care to the beautiful citizens in this beautiful city. Thank you very much. I guess that's my time. Thank you very much.
I think for all of us, it's a privilege to pass this tonight. Let's go ahead. Do we have some discussion at all? Any comments?
No, I just, like Dave said, it's pretty impressive to get something done in four meetings with a new union, not knowing what's going to happen when you go into it. But certainly, staff is well familiar with our firefighters and how wonderful a job they do to protect our residents and themselves as well. So, congratulations on the contract. Good luck with station, the new station that's going to open up in April. My favorite station, 63. Sorry, guys. That's where I've done some training with Mike and my boys there. But thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate it. And I'll visit the other stations eventually, so if you'll have me. Thanks.
Actually, before anyone has another comment, let's officially vote. We didn't vote yet. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Anyone else have a comment?
I just want to concur. And I remember when you had mentioned the word gratitude. And I know we are all grateful for all of you and what you do for our city. We have always been grateful, and we continue to be grateful for everything you guys do. I remember when it wasn't so easy to get a contract approved many years ago. And like you said, I think it is a record. I'm sure we all think it's a record. So, we definitely appreciate everyone's great efforts in making that happen. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll say something. I've been a council member for now eight years. And I know, back when I, kind of sort of when I started, not like I did anything, we've made some aggressive changes to support the police and the fire, like sometimes instantly with middle-of-the-year contracts with the police department to bring them up to a pay rate equal to or above the sheriff or equal to school board, which I kind of thought was a joke. But you guys are in line with that, too. And we've always had, even when I was a cop here, good equipment. Fire departments had always had really good stuff. But without you guys driving the trucks and saving the lives, you know, people just die. So, we recommend, you know, you guys have a council that supports staff, not just if you're in a uniform, but even public work. So, you know, having a relation, you know, from me on the outside looking in, having a relationship with the top of the food chain who sits upstairs in that office is a lot better than arguing points. So, it comes really down to your relationship with the city, and you get things done better on a handshake than you do arguing over arbitration. So, I, you know, we love you guys. So, thank you for a good job, and keep doing it.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you as well. It is unimaginable to think that we wouldn't have the amazing support that you guys deserve. So, thank you for showing up, for collaborating, for always communicating, for always being respectful in your needs. And it's just an honor to be able to pass this tonight, knowing that it includes things that allow you to recover and have even further mental health support and also physical support as well. Your fitness is extraordinary. We're so proud of you guys. I think we all are. So, we're just thrilled. So, congratulations and thank you. Thank you for negotiating. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull Resolution 56 2024 from consent.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Let's take a look.
Resolution 56 2024, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, authorizing the city manager to approve and execute all documents necessary to facilitate and manage the city's existing public-private partnership agreements, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you, Patty. All right. So, for this resolution, would there be an availability for a staff presentation of any sort?
I can answer questions about it. I mean, basically, what this resolution is doing, if you read the warehouse clauses, the whole purpose of it, I'm the one that asked for it. Basically, because we've had to make minor amendments to some of the P3 agreements that we have, because, and in this particular instance, the reason we needed it is because we have a, an error in the legal description where an additional piece of property was included in the plant drive park P3, and we need to amend it. And so, we've also had other instances over the past several years where we've had to make administrative changes to the agreements, like we've extended time for people to meet deadlines on occasion. And while that's within the city manager and the administration's authority to do, as a city attorney, I would rather have it be in writing. And so, that's why I wanted to be able to do this. And again, for the same reasons, most of those amendments, well, all of those amendments, everything that we've done on those things so far have been very, very minor. And this will not allow the city manager to make substantive amendments to the agreement such as extending the term, approving site plan, or anything like that. That doesn't obviate our code. We still, the, all the P3s, no matter what stage they're in, their approvals have to go through our normal approval process. The agreement cannot change that, because you cannot change your code by resolution. You can't change, we can't change our code by, by doing it by resolution. We'd have to pass an ordinance. And you can't amend your way around an agreement to subvert our planning process, because it sets forth in our code. It says it's got to go to DRC. It has to go to planning and zoning, and then it has to come to you for approval for the site plan and the landscape plan, et cetera. So, that's what this is. This is purely administrative. We have done this in the past on numerous occasions. You'll, if you hearken back to the park, the district park, building phase one and even part of phase two in advance, you delegated all the authority to do that to the city manager. There was a conceptual plan, and you delegated the authority to do it because we had to get it done quickly. We got it done in 13 months. We would not have got it done in 13 months, not even through any fault of your own, but just because of scheduling and meetings and procurement. We would never have been able to accomplish that in 13 months if we had to come back and have public meetings on every one of those single items that we did it. When we did the, our special, our one cent sales tax for the construction of all the things you see around the city, the council approved those things in concept and approved the budget of that money, and then authorized the city manager to get it done. And that's what this does. It's, and there is oversight, because he and I both answer to you, to you five people. And you guys are the policymakers, and you're guys the ones that, that hold us accountable for the things that we do and the decisions that we make. So, there's the, that's the synopsis of the resolution.
All right. Well, I think we should go ahead and bring it back for discussion. But before we do, let's get a motion and a second, so we can have proper discussion, if that's okay. Can I get a motion and a second regarding Resolution 56? Just to be able to talk about it.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 56 2024.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Let's bring it back for discussion and questions, anything. Marcy?
Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that. Although the, as you mentioned, although the resolution specifically says any and all amendments, along with any other documents, the intent of the, for the record, the intent is minor amendments, as you stated. This, if it's for the Cressys, it said it was for two P3 projects. So, that would be the Cressy and the Ice Rink, so to spake, so to say, the Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation application. And that does not preclude it from coming to the city council. When and if they meet all of the criteria, it will still come to the city council for a vote for the site plan, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And there's nothing that the city manager or anybody else can do about that process.
Right. And as you stated, you kind of stated the guardrails of the major, I mean, versus minor amendments. And this is solely for those minor amendments, like you said. I've seen it where legal descriptions are incorrect. I had a survey that was incorrect. To me, that's a minor modification, because it had a Scrivener's error in the survey, and it still had to go before the city council, and that took a whole nother month on another project. So, these are the type of things that you're, that you're referring to, that Scrivener's errors, and that's such a thing.
That's correct. And again, this resolution doesn't authorize amendments to the agreement that would not further effectuate and administer the agreement, meaning that the agreement has a purpose. It has a main purpose. So, you can't amend the agreement and change the purpose of the agreement. We couldn't change the parties. We couldn't change the location. We can't extend the time, the total time of like the land lease. Those are substantive, substantial changes that would, in my legal opinion, would change the character of the agreement. And as most of you know, I know you have faith in your city manager, and I think you have faith in me, and he won't sign anything if I don't sign it. And I don't, he knows how I read agreements, and I do things, and you guys do, too. I stay pretty much, I'm pretty square. I'm a, I'm a guardrails kind of guy. I like to make sure everything is done exactly the way it's supposed to be done. And that's, except the main reason I want this, this resolution is so that then we can bring, I can, I'll have a signed piece of paper that will document any minor changes we make to this agreement, instead of them being made administratively, which he can already do. I just want this to be a process, so that we have formalized paper. He's, this is going to, he's going to be, he could do all the things that we need to do in this resolution right now. I want it in paper, and I want it to memorialize the delegation of that, so I can require those amendments as we move forward. This is actually providing safeguards, not taking them away.
Again, I want to clarify that this, both Cressy and Palm Beach North Athletic Foundation, their P3 projects, which, because they're a private-public partnership, they are governed by not just our code. They're governed by Florida statutes, which has a whole nother layer of processes to go through and regulations to abide by. So, this does not negate any of that. And, you know, as long as it's, in my opinion, minor in nature, and the changes to the agreement, like you said, are not term-related or financial in nature, I solely support this approval.
Thank you so much. Bert?
Yeah.
The blank.
Yeah, Max, can we go back to just a little history, the 2017 bond that we did for all the different facilities? That was kind of my last month on the council, my first time around. And I know that we authorized the city manager to do, I forgot what the bond amount was, $30 million, I believe?
Yes.
For him to spend on various projects throughout the city. And I know we did that upfront, because we had to get to market quick. Even quicker with COVID coming on, we didn't realize that was going to happen, and save all that money to the city, as we talked about last month during the budget. But in that process, the city manager went out and engaged contracts and talked about projects that we were doing, and then brought them back to the council as each one came forward. Is that how it worked? Because I wasn't around back then for approvals.
Yeah, that's how some of it worked. I think Ron could, most of those major, because they were major procurements, but it allowed us to move forward and put all those things in place without having to, to ask permission to do it with each one.
Right.
So, you gave a blanket approval for the allocation of those funds. And then, as each one of those projects came forward, we brought those contracts for you after we went through the procurement process. But it allowed us to move much, much more rapidly than everyone else. I know we've said this before, and not to sound like a Palm Beach Gardens apologist, but if you look around, there were only two municipalities in the whole county that did a bond for that.
Yep.
It was Gardens and Del Ray. And Del Ray only did it because I was representing him at the time and brought the idea to them. They never got out of the starting blocks with that money. You guys developed the council, meaning you were here, I think Marcy might have been here. The rest of you, I don't think were at the time. But this council, this body had the foresight to, to recognize, to support the, the identification of all those projects.
Yep.
And then the allocation of that money in advance. So, we got a, instead of getting a discount to present value, we got really kind of the reverse. We got a boost to present value, because we got to spend all that money right away, when, before construction costs go up, before dollars get devalued. Everybody else that waited to get their money, piece by piece, year over year, had piecemeal little projects.
Yeah.
And the other thing that it did, that you guys allowed us to do, is that we can't bid projects we don't have money for. So, we had all that money upfront, so you could go out and you could bid for a $6 million project over here or a $10 million project over there. And you had, because you had the money. If they were getting it year by year, you'd had to wait to stack it up and then try and do it. So, it was, it was, actually, it was a lot of foresight. It was smart. I think it was courageous. And there were checks and balances, like there always is. And you're, and you've hired a professional staff to do a professional job for you, and that's what we all try to do as a team here every day. And I know there's a lot of suspicion of government, especially because of our federal government, the things that go on. But this is the most transparent, and the government is the most responsive to all the governments that anybody deals with. And I know all of you take calls and emails and answer things. And this is not, like I said, this is actually increasing oversight and tracking and accountability rather than decreasing it.
And I think the beauty of the bond, that's why I get back to it, is staff was able to do their thing, probably double the money that was borrowed for the projects that's been done around the city for the past seven years. And it didn't cost a taxpayer here a dime. It's a beautiful thing, when you look at it back. So, okay, thank you. I just want to clarify on that.
Any other questions? You guys got them all answered for me along the way. Thank you so much. And especially, Max, thank you for, one of my main questions was to, you know, tell us how this has happened before. And those are extraordinary examples that make it extremely clear. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
I do want to make one more comment, which is, I wanted, because I was not on the council when Cressy Sports and the original agreement was made. So, I literally went on our website. I didn't ask anybody for, to send me a copy of it. I literally went on our website through, you know, through the search bar, and I was able to pull up not just the meeting and the minutes, but the actual agreement. And I was able to search and read the agreement for the first time, you know, because I wasn't on the council when the original agreement. So, I wanted to read that original agreement. And I was able to do that just by looking on our website. It's all there for everybody to see. I just went through the normal way of searching the web. So, it was very easy to access. And I just want to let everyone know that it's there. You can read it. You can read every single agreement that's been approved. And also, anything that we have on our council agenda, our backup material, it's there for everybody to read. We read it the same time the public reads it. So, I just wanted, just to say that, because some people might not realize that. But I do want to say that. And we do have public comment, I know.
And then I don't want to forget to mention, do you want to mention it?
Yes. In our summer production of Signature Magazine, which copies are over there, there's two pages here dedicated to the P3 projects. there's, uh, two pages here dedicated to the P3 projects and tells you what you need to know about, uh, Cressy as well as PBG and A, what do they call themselves? Yeah, yeah. So it's out there, it's in, and it's, uh, a well-written pictures and everything. Miracle Field, that's another P3. Uh, we, we helped them raise money and then we paid, we helped fund Miracle League. So the benefits of P3, saving taxpayers' dollars, providing services and fields to our public, to me, that's a win-win.
Thank you. We did have a couple, yep, well, we have a couple comment cards, so I want to get those in. Is that okay, Max, before we vote? All right, so, uh, we have three public comment cards, I believe, some of them might, there might be one or two that people didn't necessarily list it. Um, and if so, just let us know. So you'll have three minutes, please, to come to the podium, state your name and address. First we'll have Helen Brown and then Scott G.I.L.O.W. Is Helen here?
Good evening and thank you for having us. Uh, my name is Helen Brown. I live at 10160, 10162 Plant Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. And I'm here tonight because I feel that we need to remove resolution 56 from the agenda. And I'm just going to read kind of the email that I've sent to each of you real quick. Um, basically it says, "I'm writing to express my strong displeasure with the decision to re, to place, uh, resolution 56 on the agenda for a mid-month meeting, September 19th, 2024. I'm emailing you to request resolution 56 be pulled from the consent agenda tonight. The timing of this decision feels underhanded and sneaky, particularly given the large amount of residents who are opposed to the construction of the ice rink. I question the transparency of this process, especially since you're requesting giving voting authority of this issue to our city manager who sleeps through most of the meetings." That's not in my thing, but it's just a, a common thing. We have so many pictures of this gentleman just sleeping. I don't even know if you're, if you're there right now. Where is the justice of this approach? Not only are we disheartened by the news of council members renting space to PBNAF, Mr. Ferris appears to want a complete control over the decision that could dramatically impact the lives and property values of the residents like myself. It seems unfair, improper, that the only individually, especially, you good? Especially one with a vested interest in the outcome should have so much power over a decision that will affect our whole community. I believe this process raises serious concerns about the integrity of our city's governance and it seems to me that, that Mr. Ferris may have his priorities aligned more with the developers and business interests than with the residents he's supposed to represent. The potential construction across the street from my home threatens not only my quality of life, also the value of my property and my family's future. If this was happening outside of your door and you had one person getting the voting rights, not coming and sitting anymore and he could push things through, just boom, 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 yes, let's move things along quickly. I hear you. That's why I'm here. I urge the city council to move, to remove resolution 56. Never there should there be a resolution that gives much, this much power to one individual. At this month's council meeting, I addressed the rumor at last month's, at, at this, this month, I addressed that there was a rumor that there was a gentleman in PGA National that was talking about how this was a done deal and it's a one vote and we've got it done. And this is just adding to the fact that this is not a rumor. This is something that somebody obviously is not really being quiet about this and they think that it's, this, this, our community, they're basically, what we're hearing is that our community should just be leveled so that we can make this a whole tourist area.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next we have Scott G.I.L.O.W. And then Na, uh, sorry, Nancy Rim, R-I-M-K, Rimkunis. Thank you, sorry. I'm probably not pronouncing that right. Rinkunis, thank you.
Scott Gillo, 738 Duchess Court, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. Bravo, Mr. Ferris. Bravo! At least you can wake up. When you, when, when I was here a couple weeks ago, I talked about how great of a magician Mr. Ferris was. The show's still continuing, it seems, again. As I'm speaking about, I'm speaking about resolution 56. The resolution is nothing more than a smokescreen for the council's indiscretions. As Mr. Lomond even pointed out, there has been discrepancies, so there is discretion. The Garden, Gardens Council was created as a democracy. We, the people, have a say. Resolution 56 is clear to tear at the fabric of this democracy and the people of this city. Where we have checks and balances now. Passing resolution 56 is a dictatorship where one man will have control and power of what he wants, whenever he wants. Yes, Mr. Ferris is the longest-serving manager in Palm Beach Gardens' history. Congratulations. If you were awake, you would hear me. Please keep in mind, Mr. Ferris obviously is a 78-year-old man. The likelihood of him staying as a manager will end sooner than later. What happens to resolution 56 then? What then? A little bit more about me. When I put mine in mind of something, I can make it happen. So I say this, coming March, there'll be two seats open on the council sitting up there. By voting yesterday on resolution 56, you will be announcing my candidacy for Palm Beach County City Council.
Next we have Nancy Rinkunis, who I'm not, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Nancy? Thank you.
My name is Nancy Rinkunis. I live at 4121 Ilex Circle North, Palm Beach Gardens.
Excuse me, ma'am, can you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Do I have to repeat? Do I? Nancy Rinkunis, 4121 Ilex Circle North, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, 33410. We have been a resident for 52 years, so we have seen a lot of changes. We have seen our children grow up. I know Mr. Permaroso, I knew his mother, so we've been here and seen a lot happen. I do strongly oppose this whole proposal from beginning to end. We never saw it coming. We never had the information until when it was all, this proposal was signed and delivered. That, to me, is not serving your constituents. We need to find out what's going on in our city. And I strongly resent having to turn over resolution 56 to Ron Ferris. Now, to me, he says you as a council are abdicating your responsibility on working it and giving him the control.
Oops, sorry, thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, that's it. Well, let's go ahead and, do we have any other further comments, questions or otherwise from council? Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let's move right on. Do we have a city manager report this evening?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, you still have to vote on the consent agenda.
Oh, goodness gracious. Thank you, passing, sorry, messed up my, I'm a little out of, we're off the, we're off the chart now. All right, so let's go ahead and, okay, all in, let's get a motion in a second to approve this consent agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion to appro-
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is a city manager report, sir, do we have one? Thank you. All right, let's move along. We do have two comment cards from the public. First up, we have Eric Brown. And then, um, nope, it was for something else. And then after that, we'll have Madeline Zarin.
Hello. Here we are again. My name is Eric Brown, 10162 Plant Drive. And I too oppose to, um, resolution 56. I don't understand why we have a special meeting here, why this is being done at this time instead of at the normal meeting. This is the kind of politics we have today, where we pass agendas.
I apologize, sir. We put you at this area for comments for the public because you wrote, um, that you were going to be talking about the skate park. We've already passed resolution 56. Did you want to amend your comments?
All right, we'll do the skate park because it's all tied together. I, I, I want to ask you, are you considering the public, the people who were opposed to this skate rink? Can, can you tell us why you're going to put this eyesore in my neighborhood? Would you have this eyesore in your neighborhood? And that's not a rhetorical question. I'm kind of curious. Would you put this building across the street from your house? A little nod, a little shake of the head? Tell me, would you put this building across the street from your house? Not going to get an answer. I'd like you to think about it. Why are you taking away a park that offers free services to our children and adults to play basketball, to skate, to ride bicycles, and putting in a for-profit business? Why are you taking away a park from us? Which, who, who is benefiting from this? Which one of you is this so important? How are you serving the community with, with, uh, by taking away a free park? I don't get it. And, and I hope you're thinking about what I'm saying. What's the reason for this? Who is benefiting? Certainly not the children who use the skate park, the basketball courts, the softball Thank you.
All right, next on comments from the public, we have Madeline Zarin.
Good evening, Madeline Zarin, 8054 Murano Circle. Section 78 dash 303 of Palm Beach Gardens Code of Ordinances states, "Land shall not be landscaped, cleared, or grubbed within the city unless written permission is first obtained by site plan approval and a permit as outlined in this division." Section 78 dash 302 states that failure to comply with the requirements of this division or any permit or approval granted or authorized hereunder shall constitute a violation of this division. According to the city's own building division, there are zero permits in the system for the land clearing of the 14-acre parcel at District Park. A permit that was pulled for the land clearing of the neighboring 31-acre parcel in 2018 has expired. The city violated their own code when it cleared the 14-acre parcel of land at District Park by not applying for and obtaining the proper permits pursuant to the code that I have cited for you here today. How did this happen? Further, per Chapter 68, Section 27 of the Florida Administrative Code, FWC's gopher-tortoise permitting guidelines include specific requirements for various elements of the gopher-tortoise permitting system. Within those same guidelines, it is clearly stated that the construction must be commenced within 90 days of the most recent gopher-tortoise survey. The most recent sur, survey the city claims they had done was dated in March of 2024. Therefore, the clearing of the land that also houses protected gopher tortoises was done unlawfully, which means the city violated Florida Administrative Code as the city did not begin construction within 90 days and gopher tortoises were, in fact, recently spotted on the site. The city should have obtained necessary permits to move those tortoises, yet they failed to do so. The city charged me $404 for records that showed it was lazy and most certainly did not handle this District Park land clearing situation in accordance with the code. Contrary to the self-serving story in the Palm Beach Post, city officials have not been careful to work with FWC. The city blatantly violated the permitting guidelines and they did not even bother to install the silt fencing to prevent tortoises from moving on to the development site, which is highly recommended by the FWC. It should not be the job of the public to ensure that the city is following the law. This is a council, city manager, form of government. Apparently, we need to be constantly asking questions about what our city manager is doing, as it appears Mr. Ferris believes the rules apply to everyone except the city itself. Even when residents raised valid concerns, uh, for the voiceless, there was zero transparency from the city when it came to the clearing of the land that destroyed the homes of gopher tortoises and bald eagles.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, thank you for your time. Next, we're going to move on to items for, um, council action and items of interest. Do we have any this evening? Yes, sir?
If you would grant me permission, I'd like to address some of the things that were just brought up.
Yes, please.
Um, I guess the bottom line here is the protection of the turtle. And if you have some evidence, if any of you have evidence that the nest or turtles were harmed, I'd kind of like to see that. In addition to that, the permits that were issued when Mr. Engel approached, um, my office and his supervisor's office, he was ready to start clearing the land, uh, I stopped him. I said, "You can't clear the land until we have an opportunity to notify the people in the communities around there." So you can blame me, which you already have, for that delay in the permit. So as you can see, if displayed here, at that time, we sent Charlotte Przynski from Leisure Services to communicate with the HOAs, POAs, management companies of the surrounding communities so that they would know what was going on in those communities. This plan has been in effect since 2017, I believe it is, as far as the development of this park. Was never intended to be a nature preserve. It was intended to be an athletic facility. That was the interlocal agreement and lease agreement that we have with Palm Beach County. I don't have all the information to answer your questions, but we, I would encourage you to contact the FWC if you haven't already. Talk to the gopher-tortoise conservation biologist and see if he's okay with what we've done. So, uh, we've done what we've done. To our knowledge, we've not harmed a nest or a turtle. And that's the bottom line. That's what we're all trying to protect. If you have evidence the other, otherwise, go through the process. So, uh, that's how that happened. Our city engineer, by the way, is the person who approves the permit she's recommending. So finding it kind of nonsensical to think that he would write himself a permit, that he would turn around and, and sign himself. But we had that conversation. Uh, if I missed anything else, please, Todd, you're welcome to join in. Staying out of it, huh? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, let's, let's go ahead to our items for council action and discussion or interest. I, oh, it's hard not to, but I think, I think we're, uh, I, all I, all I will say is that we all cross our Ts and dot our Is and serve with integrity and authenticity and are approachable and will continue to do so. And that is all I care to say. And with that, we will go to the city attorney's report.
No report.
And then we are adjourned.